All right, good evening. I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting of April 22nd to order. Can we start with a roll call?
Alberto Peratori.
Aziz Anson.
Norma Drummond.
Rocco Lomato.
Art Mahoney.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, on our agenda this evening, there is one change. Item number five has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will not be discussing anything related to item number five. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 27th. For anybody who needs to return and come to that meeting, that meeting is going to be held at the community center. What's happening here?
This room is booked.
This room is booked? Oh, it's grievance day. Yes, it's grievance day. So we get bums for grievance day. So we'll be at the, we will be meeting at the community center that evening, so.
Community center.
The community center on 82.
Right.
Right. And then our other meeting, our meeting following that will be Tuesday, June 24th. We do have one set of minutes to approve. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 25th? And were there any amendments?
No, I didn't see any issues, so I make a motion to amend.
Second.
To approve the minutes of March 25th?
Without any amendments.
And I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good. And I'm not talking about snow, because I think I jinxed ourselves last month.
Are you sure?
I know, really. That was, that, all right, guys. So let me just go through quickly what happens this evening. The first order of business is any public hearings that we have on, because those are applications that this board has already had the opportunity to review. And now we just need to hear from neighbors if there's anything that you're concerned about relating to any of these applications, because you probably know the areas better than we do for where many of these properties are located. The second part of the meeting is reviews, which are generally the first time we're seeing any of these applications. And just please keep in mind that you are all here because you are all asking for something that is not allowed by the code. And so you all, you know, you're here because you're asking for our consideration. So we need to understand what is unique about your property, or what is unique about the circumstances of your property that this board should, you know, should agree to the appeal that you're requesting. So with that in mind, let's get going through the agenda. Item number one is an adjourned public hearing. Appeal 4131 Joseph Manassi, 29 Thunder Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting an appeal from the zoning administrator's determination of the front yards pursuant to section 194-14.2 and local law number seven of 2022 for lot 1 and 2. A variance to allow structures in the front yard, including the existing detached garage, existing pool, pool deck shed, and the proposed 1,500 square foot detached garage, and a 40-foot front line variance, and a 331 square foot size variance for the proposed detached garage pursuant to section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. The footprint of the existing house is 1,948 square feet. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So Mr. Manassi, if you don't mind having you come up to here. So since the last meeting, when we had an opportunity, we opened up the public hearing, none of your neighbors came. Since that meeting, I did, at your, with your permission, I did actually take a walk up through your driveway one day and up your, and just kind of looked around. And the first thing I want to say is, number one, those houses are beautiful. I wish the gray house in the front was actually facing clove branch, because the stonework on that house is just really, it's beautiful. And, you know, so there's, so what, for the public who are here, the reason we're here is because there are three houses on a private, on a shared driveway, which is allowed, okay? Back in, I think, 1991, there was, this property was subdivided and granted a shared driveway for the three houses. And so the first house is supposed to be facing clove branch, but it doesn't. It faces the other direction. It's, most of the time, it's hidden by the vegetation that's there, by the trees. The second house faces, I think, also the same direction, so it's facing in as opposed to facing out or facing the driveway. And then the third house is more oriented toward the driveway itself. And so what you're asking for now is to be able to put a, there's, there is, let me start by saying, there is an existing detached garage that was supposed to be attached by a breezeway, but that wasn't built. And so that detached garage, we are still waiting for information about the second floor square footage of that. And so then you're now asking for an additional detached garage to be placed, again, in the front yard of the property. This is a very large property. It's over nine acres, so the opportunity does exist for you to further subdivide. And what you have said to us is that you don't want to be placing any structures in a manner that would limit your ability to further subdivide the property in the best manner. And right now, you don't want to cut down any more trees.
Correct.
So, so by walking up there and seeing it myself, I was able to, it made sense what you're asking for, okay? I'm not disagreeing with the fact that the orientation of the, at some point, the driveway may very well become a road, and it makes sense for those houses to face the driveway. But that being said, the code is what the code is. And our administrator made a determination about where the driveways, or where the fronts of the front yards of these properties are. We wanted to hear from neighbors to see if they wanted to weigh in on any of these issues. Also, the variances that you've requested, recognizing that the front yards may be what the zoning administrator has determined. So at the last meeting, we adjourned because we said we still needed some specific information. You were not here at the meeting, so, but, you know, in your absence, you know, we made it clear that there was still additional information. You knew you were waiting for plans from your professional. So apparently, some information was delivered to the building department yesterday. You just mentioned to me outside that you just got some plans from your architect this afternoon, like, three hours ago. So nobody's had an opportunity to review that. So I think it really would only be fair, I'll see if there's anybody here that wants to comment on your application tonight, but otherwise, the important thing is what the variance that we're going to give you, we don't want you to come back to request a different square footage, because we got the numbers wrong, because we didn't have the information we needed.
Understood.
All right? So it's more important that we get the numbers right with the right information. So if you've got plans today, I'm hoping, before the end of the week, you might be able to get them to the building department, so that they can make the right determinations about these variances, so that we can just be sure that the numbers, we have all the information that we need, and we have the numbers that are correct.
Yep.
Okay? So with that being said, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the appeal of Joseph Manassi, 29 Thunder Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting an appeal from the zoning administrator's determination of the front yards and a variance to allow a bunch of structures in his front yard? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting to next month?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will see you next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have the plans? Are we going to get a copy of the plans?
They, they were just delivered to Matt yesterday, and he said he just got the architectural stuff today, so like.
So it'll be mailed to us?
So as soon as Jackie can get the appropriate information, she'll make sure we get it. Okay? Thank you. All right, item number two, appeal 4133 Joe Calcutti, 131 Martin Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13-foot side yard variance for an existing eight-foot by 10-foot or 80-square foot shed, a 15-foot side yard variance for an existing eight-foot by 15-foot or 120-square foot shed, and a 25-foot side yard variance for an existing 16-foot by 23-foot carport pursuant to section 194-7, 107 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Oh my gosh. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Calcutti, all right, come on up. All right, so last month, we had the opportunity to talk with you about your application. You have built three structures in your backyard. I told you I had done a site visit on Martin Road, and I went looking, and I could not find these structures. I saw lots of other structures, you know, on other people's properties, but honestly, you tucked these into the backyard very nicely, so, and from the pictures that the zoning administrator took, you're taking care of them, and they're, everything in your yard is nicely, you know, in these, in the structures, et cetera. So you're using them as they should be. Yes, they want to go as right to the property line and, you know, but honestly, I think you use the property well. And because they're screened from the road, I don't think you're impacting your neighbors unless, you know, there's some specific concern that they did want to raise. On that note, we did receive a letter from one of your neighbors, so I just want to read that into the record, since we're in the public hearing. So dated April 21st, 2025, to whom it may concern, please accept my letter as support for the proposed plans/variants request from Joe Calcutti on his property at 131 Martin Road, Hopewell Junction. I have been neighbors with the Calcutti family for years and have no objection with the plans moving forward. Signed. Your neighbors at 127 Martin Road. I can't read the handwriting though, so that's okay.
Yeah, it's Albanian last name.
That's, it's fine. I just can't honestly read his handwriting, so. So with that said, your immediate neighbor is in support of this application, so is there any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
I'm sorry. I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the appeal from Joe Calcutti, 131 Martin Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13-foot side yard variance for an existing eight-foot by 10-foot shed, a 15-foot side yard variance for an existing eight-foot by 15-foot shed, and a 26-foot, sorry, 25-foot side yard variance for an existing 16-foot by 23-foot carport? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is appeal number 4133, applicant Joe Calcutti, requesting a 13-foot side yard variance from the requirement of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and a, and section 194-107 of the town code for an existing eight-feet-by-10-feet-80-square-foot shed and a 15-foot side yard variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and section 194-107 of the town code for an existing eight-feet-by-15-feet-120-square-foot shed and a 25-foot side yard variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and section 194-107 of the town code for an existing 16-feet-by-23-feet carport collectively referenced to as the variances. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the house is set back further from the road compared to other neighboring properties, and whereas the carport is a permanent structure tucked away in the backyard, and where the sheds are existing and contributing to the tidy appearance of the property, and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECRA, and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on April 16th, 2025, and where the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on April 22nd, 2025, and where the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community, since the carport and sheds are largely invisible from the road, the desired result cannot be achieved by any other means due to the existing narrow width of the property. The variances could be deemed substantial. The variances will not have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Therefore, be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Joe Calcutti for a 13-foot side yard variance from the requirements of Schedule of Bulk Regulations and section 194-107 of the town code for an existing eight-feet-by-10-feet-80-square-foot shed and a 15-foot side yard variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and section 194-107 of the town code for an existing eight-feet-by-15-feet-120-square-foot shed and a 25-foot side yard variance from the requirement of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and section 194-107 of the town code for an existing 16-feet-by-23-feet carport. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Alberto?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Okay? Have a good evening.
You too.
Item number three, appeal 4134, John and Reema Adomo, Kent Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to build on an undersized lot of .45 acres in an R1 zone and a 25-foot lot width variance pursuant to section 194-130 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, again, we had the opportunity to review this last month. You, we had a quite the discussion about the character of the neighborhood. This is, this front area of Kent's Road is, majority of these lots were built in the 50s, and some in the 70s, but many of them in the 50s. All undersized lots, but also all rather smaller homes, which is something that his town honestly needs, with the exception of a few, but, and then further in, there's another subdivision where the houses are significantly larger, okay?
Can I add to that, please?
Absolutely.
Okay, there, on the Emmett Dean subdivision, there were 28 parcels.
Okay.
I did a little spreadsheet analysis. There are 12 lots of, 12 houses with 1,600 square foot or more.
Okay.
Okay, out of that, the average of the entire subdivision is 1,511 square feet.
Okay.
Of the 28 parcels homes, there are 19 with full basements, so that's not out of character. You have a house that was granted a variance in 2009, 1,963 square foot house on a lot similar in size to this.
Mm-hmm.
You have a colonial, you have two splits, you have two raised ranches, and this one would be a proposed two-story home.
Two-story in the front.
Two-story, and.
Three levels with walkout in the back.
That back rear is going to be adjusted. The homeowner said he's gonna, it's, you got the sliding glass doors, it's gonna be, so that's six foot, four, two foot on each side, he's gonna put a wall, so it's just a sliding glass door. That'll be filled in, so it won't be as drastic.
Oh, okay, all right, that helps.
That'll help in, in the rear. I fully understand all our comments. I've done, you know, a little research. The goal here was to, we're supposed to be trying to maintain green space, so that's why we went with the two-story. It's only, first floor is only 784 square feet, second floor goes to 995 square feet because it has room over the garage. Meets all the zoning setbacks for the requirement of the undersized lots. I did talk to my client. I can go put a raised ranch on the property. I could still meet the setbacks. The property would be, the building would be 30 by 50, so we're going to a 1,700 square foot footprint compared to a 988 square foot. So my goal, in my years of experience, I'm trying to provide additional green space property. Houses aren't that close together, and that was the reason for going up, to reduce the amount of.
So what you're saying is the square footage is, you still achieve the same square footage, but instead of being wider, because as many of the homes, as you pointed out, are one-story or ranches, so you're preserving green space, so there's more vegetation on the ground, but you're going higher. And I think it's the going higher that makes it a little bit more out of character with this neighborhood. That's from, that's the discussion that we had last month.
Correct.
Okay.
And I do have a question. I don't mean to be disrespectful. If this is denied for the two-story, essentially, you are not going to allow any of the residents to add on to their homes to go two-story. If you're going to deny this, you can't allow that. This may open up the character to the neighborhood, that people who have smaller homes realize that they could put a second story on their house, move the bedrooms upstairs, have more usable space downstairs, and keep the same footprint, and, you know, have more space on their property, making it more marketable.
Okay.
Without having to really deal with the health department. So there's a restriction that sort of goes if this gets denied with the two-story.
Okay, but let me be clear, we are not, this board has no jurisdiction over whether the house is going to be two stories or not. We gave you our impression.
Correct.
Because, again, our concern, what you're here for this board is the lot width, okay? You're, you're looking to build on an undersized lot, so you've already got less than half of the required acreage that is required in an R1 zone, less than half at .45 acres. And you need a 25-foot variance, because your lot is not a, it's supposed to be 150-feet-wide.
125 in the 200.
Yeah, so, right, so, so that's, that's the issue that you're here for us, whether it's.
And it was a pre-approved lot, so.
Right, so.
I talked to the town planner, and I talked to the health department. The health department said if I can meet all setbacks, which we did, we do have board of health approval. And planner said that there's the requirement for the undersized lots, which we do meet.
So in essence, what the argument you should be making to us is because the lot width is smaller than a required lot, because you want to preserve the green space on each side of the house, that's one of the reasons you're proposing to go higher.
And that's why I started off with that.
Which you did say in a roundabout way. Yes, thank you, Jeff. So, all right, so, let's, I do have a couple neighbor letters, and I think that some of them are some concerns, so I, you know, you're not going to go anywhere, we're going to address those, but before I get to that, I just want to ask if there are any comments or questions from board members?
Again, the issue that you have raised, which I think we had discussed last time, is that a certain neighborhood has a certain character, and so if you go two stories, then everybody who has a ranch or one story, they'll say, hey, okay, our neighbor has been allowed two stories, so we're gonna go two stories, and then they're gonna come up here, all the neighbors, let's say, for the.
No, they wouldn't need a variance, because the house, you're not changing the footprint.
You're not changing the second story.
So those existing homes do not have to come here, and we need to look at.
Except they would have to come here because they're creating their undersized lot.
Correct.
The footprint is already there.
Doesn't matter, they're still making it more non-conforming, right? Because they're increasing the square footage, or no?
I'm, I'm not sure if we received an application for.
Whether it would come to us? It might not.
Adding the second floor, because the footprint is already there.
And, and.
There's nothing to trigger, because they've already built on that.
Yeah, it may not have to come.
Right.
And we also need to realize, back in the 50s.
There was no zoning.
Now, what was the typical house? I grew up here in Dutchess County, I grew up in Hyde Park. My, our house was built in 1953. It was a ranch. And that, that was the typical homes that were built during those times. So that's why they're all that way.
Right.
But now, people may see, oh, you know, this second story really makes a difference. So that, I know that has nothing to do with you.
Well, again, my point was that the character of the neighborhood right now, you mentioned that there's only one house that has got 1963 square foot or something like that, but I don't know if it is similar to yours, because, or, you know, what, how many level is it? It's a two-story raised ranch? I mean, I don't know. And again, because the pictures that we had in the.
That we saw last month, right.
Last one, everybody was just a raised ranch or small.
There were ranches, not raised ranches.
You have, you have a colonial, two splits, two raised.
But the colonial was in a different neighborhood, if I remember.
No, it's not. It's the corner lot of Emmett Dean subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, there was one that got a variance, not helping.
I didn't take pictures of.
Okay, I didn't see, okay.
I didn't survey the entire subdivision.
Okay, so at least, so there is at least, for our purposes, there is at least one.
There are a couple.
Okay. Undersized lot with a couple of houses in that neighborhood that are bigger than the rest of.
That are more than one story.
More than one story and bigger.
There are nine, there are 12 lots, 12 houses with 1,600 square foot or more in building size.
1,600, okay.
There are 19.
Okay, so you're proposing seven, and you're proposing 1775 square foot house.
Correct.
Two levels.
Two level.
Two levels.
Trying to reduce the footprint to give more green space.
And then even the, the back, the basement is going to be kind of, for lack of better words, kind of buried in the, you know, it'll be contoured so that it's, the three levels are, are only civil, are available or can be seen from the back, but not from the front.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the square footage, according to the plans, is 2,652.
That, that.
Unless that's changed.
I put the basement in there just as square footage, but it's not, it's not going to be a finished basement.
With a sliding glass door to the back out, so yeah.
But it's still, it's still going to be included in the square footage.
Correct, but all the, all these other homes that I gave you, the basements aren't included in the square footage either. It's just the houses are that size.
Well, it depends on.
Depends.
Those could have been finished subsequent to when they were originally built.
No, but I, I went out.
If they were built before 1960.
63.
Six, no, 60-something, 68 maybe.
Oh, for allowing finished basement. Oh, that was later.
Yeah, so that was even later than.
Yeah, that was.
There was a later date for that.
That was like 91.
Right. But, but that square footage has to be.
89, okay, yeah, sometime around then.
Those houses.
Basement.
Yeah. Those houses you're referring to are not legitimate basements because.
We don't know that. We don't know what permits have been issued for what houses.
We don't know.
Norma, I, besides being an engineer, I'm also, you know, I'm a co-enforcement officer. There are no egress windows, there's no things that make it legitimate.
Okay.
So I can look at those.
I understand that, I'm just saying, from our perspective, we can't presume that there are unpermits.
It didn't need those if it was done prior to 90, 89, in our town.
Anyway. All right.
Trying to, we're trying to preserve the green space.
I, I get it, but let me just finish with the board members to see if there are any additional comments or concerns.
I've just raised my concerns, that's it.
That's fine. I still have to read the letters, too.
Yeah.
You're, you're good beyond what the letters have to say? Okay.
Address stuff like this.
Rocco or Art, any comments or questions?
I'm gonna reserve comments, so here more.
Okay, all right. So let me read the three letters that we've gotten. The first one is dated April 10th, 2025. Dear Ms. Drummond, I'm writing to you to express my opinion on appeal 4134, as I will be out of state and unable to attend the public hearing. I have been a resident of Jeffrey Road for 25 years, and my property is less than 250 feet from lot 421. After reviewing the Schedule of Regulations and section 194-130, I believe the request for the variances is quite a large request. While most houses in that development were built in approximately 1957, the codes have changed since then for good reasons. As it stands, lot 421 is not even half the present lot size requirement, and is 25 feet short of the frontage requirement. After reviewing the zoning board meeting held March 25th, 2025, the proposed house size does not align itself with the other homes in the development. I fail to see how the home will enhance the neighborhood in any way. I also believe it may create a safety issue because of the limited sight on Kent Road at lot 421. Traffic from Route 376 on Kent Road will not see vehicles or pedestrians entering or exiting a newly created driveway at lot 421 until the last moment. So unfortunately, for these reasons, I cannot support the granting of the variances listed in appeal 4134. Thank you for your attention. This is addressed sincerely, Thomas O'Connor. The second letter dated April 13th, 2025. Dear Ms. Drummond, we are writing in response to your letter dated April 1st, 2025, announcing that John and Reema Adomo have requested a variance to build on lot 421 on Kent's Road. Unfortunately, we are unable to attend the meeting scheduled for April 22nd, 2025 at 7:00. This communication is in response to the variance request. While I understand that the lot in question is approved as a building lot, the house proposed is over 2,200 square feet with two stories facing Kent Road and three stories in the rear. That being said, the proposed structure will be much larger than the standard home designs on Kent Road, and will not enhance the overhaul aesthetics of the road. Please also note that based on the road design, any driveway out into the lot, cut into the lot, could cause a safety issue. When driving down Kent's Road, an elevation in the road will create a blind driveway condition when approaching the new driveway. Given my concerns above, I cannot support the variances as requested. Thank you in advance, and this is signed Anthony and Patricia Brekko. Last letter dated April 20th, 25, from Robert and Mary Essa Stevens. To whom it may concern, I am writing to formally express my concerns regarding a proposed residential construction across the street from my home at 24 Kent's Road in the Kent Road neighborhood. The property owners of that lot are currently seeking approval to build a house that is significantly larger than what is typical for our neighborhood. The proposed raises multiple issues for myself and others in the community. First and foremost, the size and scale of the proposed home are not in line with the surrounding homes, and would drastically alter the look and character of our street. This neighborhood has a consistent and modest design, and inserting such a large structure would be out of place, and could negatively affect property values and the visual harmony of our area. In addition to concerns about scale, I'd like to raise a few practical and safety-related issues. The front, the road in front of our homes already experiences a high volume of fast-moving traffic. Adding another driveway in this location increases the risk for accidents, both for those backing out of the new property and for drivers navigating around parked cars on the road. This area was not designed to handle additional roadside congestion. We are also concerned about environmental and health impacts. The proposed septic system and well from the new home would be in close proximity to existing ones on neighboring properties, and we are uneasy about the potential strain on the land and water systems. The disruption of the soil and vegetation could also affect groundwater flow and nearby wells. Additionally, this property is currently a natural area that serves as a small habitat for local wildlife, including deer and wild turkeys, which are regularly seen crossing and feeding there. The construction and increased human activity would likely push these animals further out and continue the unfortunate trend of habitat disruption that we've been witnessing. For these reasons, we respectfully ask that the town carefully consider the impact of this project, not only in terms of zoning and square footage, but in terms of safety, environmental sustainability, and neighborhood character. We strongly oppose the approval of this development as currently proposed. Please note that this letter is supported not only by myself and my husband, but also by several of my neighbors who share the same concerns, including Ernesto and Donna Negron, John and June Boniello, Kyle Moy. Thank you for your considered, time and consideration. So, these are the three letters that we've received, but collectively, they are representing four, five, six of the neighbors, okay? Let's speak about the driveway, because we didn't talk about site distance with this driveway. So, are you proposing, without taking out the plans, are you proposing that the driveway be the far, farthest away from 376, or where are you?
Furthest, the way there is adequate. I've driven it, I've pulled in when we had to do the deeds and perks for the Health Department. There's no issue, you're talking, you know, one car, two cars, it's not a big traffic generator, and again, this was all...
So is there appropriate site distance for somebody exiting that property? Okay.
Had no issue with any of the equipment going in and out, it's...
Okay. Um, let's just ask if there are any other neighbors here that took the time to come and want to express either support of or not, so if there's anyone else who wishes to speak for or against this, the appeal of, sorry, I've lost my agenda somewhere. Here. John and Reema Adomo, Kent's Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to build on an undersized lot of .45 acres in our one zone, and a 25-foot lot with variance. So what I will ask is, anybody who does speak, there is a clipboard on there, if you could just write your name, print your name on there, so we have it for the record of our minutes.
How you doing? I'm Robert Stevens, owner of 24 Kent Road, we own the three, three properties there, it'd be 22, 24, and 26.
Okay.
Apparently, my wife wrote for me and herself there, but I just wanted to add a couple things here.
Okay.
First and foremost, thank you for letting me speak, and secondly, I want to say that everybody is entitled to their own opinion on this matter, I don't want to increase tensions with neighbors or anything like that, so just wanted you guys to know I love you all. I was approached by a neighbor who had the plans of this proposed home, the home that was described in the first town hall meeting, was a small three-bedroom that blends into the surrounding homes. It's obviously, in my opinion, doesn't really match the aesthetics of what's going on, we all have basically ranches. There is one raised ranch in the beginning of the road, it's on the left side, but that full side of homes on that one side is just regular ranches. The, the proposed house does not match the style, size, or spacing of neighboring homes. Kent Road has a distinct character with the appropriately sized lots and homes. This bill will be a noticeable outlier, every house on that side of the road, like I said, is a ranch. Allowing this would undermine the visual and spatial consistencies that residents value and have invested in. The first town hall meeting, the gentleman proposed the build, said he had spoke to the neighbors, which, I spoke to a few neighbors that are on that side, they all had said that they were not approached at all, including myself, who is literally right across. In my opinion, there's no demonstrated hardships requiring this variance, only developer... Oh, shoot, give me a second. There's no demonstrated hardships requiring this variance, only developer convenience. I respectfully urge the board to uphold the zoning laws and reject this proposal in order to preserve the integrity and character of our community. Once again, thank you guys for your time.
Can I just ask for a little, you don't, you want us to reject the proposal, so that would mean that if we don't grant the lot with variance, then no house could get built on here.
Well, we don't...
So I think, is it really that you're just asking for the applicant to reconsider the, the proposed house itself, but the lot itself? What was represented to us last month was that some of the neighbors that they had talked to were anxious for this neighborhood to just be, for the lot to get built out and finish the neighborhood.
Correct, we personally don't mind the wooded...
The lot being built.
No, the wooded area that's there, but the gentleman owns the property, he could do as he wishes, but it's based on what your opinion is.
Got it.
And I feel like if we voice our opinions, you know, and our concerns with you guys, it'll help also.
Yeah, of course.
Your objective is the size of the house.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify this, thank you. Yep, come on up.
Good evening, my name is Raymond Rodriguez, we live, me and my father, we live on the house directly next to the property, 25 Kent Road, and most of the concerns were addressed by the letters and the gentleman that just spoke, and just a few concerns I have, and my father has, is just the privacy, because the lots are so close together from 21, and 23 would be the, the new home, 25, it's just so compacted together, and I just think that people buy homes for the reason that they want their privacy, and I think that would take the privacy away from all three homes, including the new one that's going to be built. Also concerning was drainage, I'm no builder, I'm no engineer, but I do know, when you build a home, you want the water to go away from your home, and that land is slanted towards my property, which, that means the drainage is probably going to go into my property.
Well, they're, they're supposed to keep drainage on their own property.
Yeah, but, we all know that usually never happens.
Well...
And, second of all, like they said in the letter, wildlife, also the traffic, that there's a bend there, and he said it's going to be a two-car driveway, so what happens when he has visitors? Where are those cars going to park? There's going to be no space for any traffic to go through, which may be a safety issue. Other than that, also, you know, the, the septic systems, they're going to be so close together that could make, cause issues with all septic systems, you know, the, the water system as well, I don't know how that would play out with the water pressures for each and every home, and just the char, the characteristic of the home. When you, when you drive down Kent Road, everything looks pretty much the same.
Right.
And it just, it flows. Now, if you put a two-story home there, it's just going to look completely different. And I'm not sure if the homeowners are planning on, if they're building to sell, or if they're building to live there, but if they are building to sell, I think it's pretty selfish on their part, and not taking consideration of people that actually do live there, and what, how they take pride in their own neighborhood, they're just basically going to build to sell, and then make, whoever buys that home, and whoever buys the 21 Kent Road, because I, I think it's for sale, it's just going to create conflict between neighbors, because it's so close together, and they're not going to care, because they not living in the neighborhood.
Right.
So, those were my concerns.
They're not vested.
Yeah.
Because you live in the neighborhood, it was mentioned that one of the houses is kind of comparable to this house, it is three levels, I believe, is that right? That a basement and two floors?
Not my house, my house...
No, no, one of the neighboring, one of the neighboring houses.
Not that I, not that I've seen, I'm, I've...
It's supposed to be in the corner someplace.
Well, the, the first gentleman said that there was one of the first house on the left.
But that's in the beginning of the row.
That's in the beginning of the row, right.
All the way in the beginning, if, if that's the case. Everything on my side of the, of the side, it looks like it's all one-story houses.
So they're all ranches?
Yeah.
Single-story?
Yeah.
With basements?
Yeah, but you can't even see the basements, if they do have basements.
Right.
Well, I just want to make sure, right, understand that you're a neighborhood, that's what I was trying to do, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, the engineer from, for the applicant, mentioned last month that there's additional larger homes further up, that there's like a different street that has larger homes.
In the beginning of the Emmett Dean subdivision, close to 376, they were big there, and as they went back, they, you know, changed in size. Just clarification, I said there would only be two cars, I didn't say a two-car driveway. The, the house would be set back, you could probably get four cars in the driveway, to meet the zoning setbacks.
And, just to clarify, some of the other issues that are raised, there are, this lot already has Board of Health approval?
This lot has Board of Health approval?
Brought that to our attention last month, which means that there is going to be appropriate separation between the water system, the water, the well, and then the, the septic systems, not just on this lot, but of the neighboring lots.
I had to do within 300 feet, you could see on, on the maps, just to show it, I had to go through...
Just Jeff, if you can, stay close to the microphone.
Okay, I had to go through with the Health Department, get all the surrounding wells and septic, I had to make sure that nothing has changed since the subdivision was built to meet the criteria, to meet the setbacks. This meets, the original septic systems for the subdivision did not have 100% expansion area, I was able to provide 100% expansion. Main septic would be here, well here, I've met all the criteria, I had to do additional testing, the Health Department asked me to do deep holes and perks, to make sure that nothing has changed, not that the soil would change, but he wanted to verify, I did all that, submitted everything. County Health Department did review the project, and they have, they have no issues with that.
Okay, Jeff, one more point to raise, the issue about drainage, about the lot next door that would be...
Drainage, I could, I have no, once I get in, once I, once we determine, again, I have no problem, I've talked to the property office, we'll go with the raised ranch, we'll, it'll be a 30 by, it'll be a, to be consistent, it'll be a 30 by 50 footprint, instead of a large footprint, so you need that to get a three-bedroom. Anything small in a three-bedroom isn't worth building. Once I finalize that grading, I will make sure that I have a swell on the edge of the property, so no water goes on, and the, basically, I will make, have the front leaders, they'll go into drywells, in the back, I'll have to let that flow across the ground, because I can't put drywells that close to a septic.
Right.
So, with that, I can make sure it does not go on anybody's property.
Right, the requirement that you need to meet is that you're dealing with your water on your property on your own property.
Correct.
So as an engineer, that is, you know, that's the requirement that they have to meet, so, alright.
So again, you know, if the, if it's the two-story house, we can come back with a 30 by 50 house, that would meet the side yard setbacks with the undersized lot, with the 15-foot setbacks, I would still have, because I have 100 feet, it'd be 50, I'll have 25 on each side instead of 15, so I can meet all the setbacks, and it'd be just a raised ranch. We can do that.
Okay.
I was trying to reduce the footprint to what everyone's brought up, I was trying to give more green space, rather than take...
More privacy.
Rather than take the green space away, by making a bigger footprint.
Okay. Let me just ask if there are any other neighbors?
Sure.
Are there any other neighbors that wish to be heard on this matter? Yeah, come on up.
Yes, my name is, my name is Robert Chultus, I live at 19 Kent Road, I've lived there for 58 years, and the development, my wife's family had bought that house originally in 1958. My question is, why can't that house be built the same width as all the rest of them? And there is a raised ranch down, I think it's 10, that had the same thing, with the guy that had two lots, and he split it. Is it, is there a problem with it being wider, or the same width as the rest of the houses? Because they're all the same, I mean, as far as that goes. If you could see them back when they were just built, you couldn't tell one from the other. But is that a problem with the lot, or...
It, it's not a problem with the lot, it's just not what this applicant was proposing. So he does have less width on the lot than most, than what is really required to build, not most of the other lots in the neighborhood, alright, so that, the lot width size is keeping, even with the variances, in keeping with the character of this community, but what he was proposing is by going higher, there's less of a footprint, and there's more side yard for the neighbors.
Well, what I, what I've seen is, the width, the lots, the width of the lots, and the length of the lots are almost all identical, going down through there. So if houses can be built on those, now, I know it's back in 1958, but it should be grandfathered in, as far as that goes, but my question is, why can't they build a house like the other ones, instead of going real deep? And maybe move, if they want, they want to get more square footage, move the house forward a little bit, and I put an addition on mine, and I got plenty of room, but they could come forward and get more square footage.
They, they, they could, we can ask the engineer to speak to that, I don't know where the septic is being proposed, and again, he said he had a 100% expansion area, so in the event the septic fails, he already has a space identified on the property to build a new septic there, so that may limit his ability to move the house forward a little bit, I'm not sure, but we'll have, we can have him address that when you're done speaking.
Okay, well, that's, that was my question.
Okay, that's fine, no problem.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against this application? Okay, seeing none, Jeff, why don't we have you address what you just heard?
No problem, so...
Just speak to us.
Yes, okay, so, as I said, you know, here in the neighbors, I am not looking to ruffle feathers, I can go with a raised ranch, 30 by 50, which is pretty typical of what they're out, the houses that are out there, and forget the two-story, and it'd be a raised ranch, 1,750 square feet with the basement, I could meet the setbacks, it will not affect my septic at all, doesn't affect the septic approval, so I can make that work.
Okay.
If that would make everyone happy. Here's the owner, John, you have an issue with, if we went that way?
It's, it's 35, I think.
Yeah, you have, you have no issue with, if I went that way, so...
Okay.
We can make that adjustment, we're more than willing to work.
Okay.
Um, we, okay, so with the ranch, it'll be 35 by 50, and with the current footprint was how much?
Current footprint was 900 and...
No, no, the footprint.
The dimensions of it.
The dimensions.
Dimensions of the footprint were roughly 26 by 38.
26 by 38.
Correct, and that...
Okay, so I guess, we, I, I would like to ask the neighbors if they could comment, because I've given substantial information, because in their, in their neighborhood, if they see a new construction that is 35 feet by 50 feet, which would, which would meet the requirements of the neighborhood, of the character of the neighborhood, whereas the current applicant is proposing a smaller footprint, which is 26 feet by 38 feet, but two stories, so I would like the neighbors, you know, would they rather see a 35 by 50 ranch, or a 26 by 38 two-story structure in their neighborhood?
Well, a ranch would be...
Oh, can you come with me?
Yeah, we, sorry, we need you to just speak at the microphone. You can come up together, that's fine. It's alright, no problem, if we could just make sure your name is on the paper, thank you.
Yes, my name is Ernesto Negron, I live on 25 Kent Road, and he'll be right next to me.
Right.
If he's going to build anything there, I'd rather be a ranch than a two-story, because with a two-story house there, yellow, black, all view for me, because my house is set back, I got more property on front, it's kind of in the middle of the, of my, of my property, so my house right in the middle, so I've got a lot of property in the front and in the back, so if we build something two-story there, I won't have any view to anywhere, plus the black, all kinds of, wind, the, you know, fresh air, that, that'd be my concern, plus, you know, hopefully he'll have a nice drainage, because, as you know, that's on a hill, I don't know if you've been there?
Yep.
But, everything that fall from there is going to end up in my yard. And... But everything that falls from there is gonna end up in my yard. And that'd be a problem for me also.
Right. But you did, but again, you did hear him say that he'll put a swell in before the property line, so...
I know, but sometimes it'll, it'll...
Sometimes the water is so much that...
You know, rains a lot, snow a lot, and everything's gonna end up in my property. As I said, right now, I was there building. Everything that falls out of there, they leave papers, cans, and water jugs. Wind blows it, it's fall in my house. I gotta go pick it up, throw it in the garbage, because, you know, that's what happens. The wind blows everything to that, to the house, which is mine. And I have to clean up for them. So is that only with them working there, leaving trash around, falls in my, in my property? Imagine another house there. What the neighbor, I don't know, who's gonna live there? But, you know, nobody is perfect, I know. But, you know, you have to pick up after yourself, and that's what happens. Everything, you know, falls into the next guy. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would like a ranch style myself, personally.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So if I may?
Yes.
So if I'm reading all this correctly, the applicant wanted to build a two-story, well, a three-story with the basement, because there's a sloped basement entrance in the back. The neighbors are more inclined to be in favor of a ranch house, and the applicant is, seems to be okay with that, if that's the case.
A raised ranch.
Raised ranch.
I'm sorry?
A raised ranch.
A raised ranch.
Which is typical.
So it seems like the whole thing boils down to not so much objection to a house, more to objection to the way the house looks and the size of the house.
I think the layout of the house. I don't, I'm not sure the square footage...
The height of the house.
Yeah, the height of the house. I'm not sure the square footage actually changes a whole lot. It's more the, the layout of it.
Right, because all the other houses are smaller, and then you're gonna have one that's, that's tall.
They're not as, right, they're not as tall.
So that seems to be the objection from, what do you got, six, seven, eight neighbors?
Yep.
Am I reading it right? Okay.
And, and we're willing to address that with the, you know, if you want to put that in your resolution, that it's gonna be a 35 by 50 raised ranch. Then I think we addressed all the neighbors' concerns. It's still a viable house.
Right, so what you're saying is you, you're proposing a smaller footprint and going higher.
Right.
But now you'll do a larger footprint and go lower?
Correct.
Or less high, I should say.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Jeff, if I could ask you to sit down again. The gentleman in the back is gonna come back up to the microphone.
Yeah, because there are other people also watching it on television.
Yeah, they want to be able to hear you.
A raised ranch is different than a ranch, correct? It's two stories versus one.
It is, but they, because remember, the topography is going to change. Generally, with a raised ranch, you don't see the full height of this bottom level. And Jeff, that's what I, can I presume correctly?
I grew up in a raised ranch, and there's definitely visually two floors.
In some of them, in others.
Yeah.
In others, you work with the topography, so that you limit the, the view in the front.
Now, a quick question. I know our area is known for having bluestone, so is that gonna be another thing that's gonna be a big issue when they start digging? Because...
We can ask if they've identified rock in that area.
Like 95% of our area, specifically 24 Kent Road, behind me, across the street, I know they've all had a very hard time digging.
Okay.
Like fences and stuff like that was just installed behind me, and they couldn't do the back.
Well, they did deep test pits for the septic, then they've already dug over there, because they had to get clearance from the health departments.
Just a question.
Okay. Yeah, well, we can have him, we can have that addressed.
If we do hit any stone or anything, it'll be, you know, hammered out, or I just did a job in Bucipsi, and we hit a stone, and I ended up pinning the foundation to the stone. So that is always an option.
All right, but speak to the raised ranch. How much of the, what's the front facade going to, I think that's gonna be really important, that we actually see what the front of the facade's gonna look like.
John?
So I'm gonna, gotta get another plan.
I'm gonna, yeah.
Yeah, so based on the topography, though, are, is the full lower level going to be visible to the neighbors, or is it gonna be built into the topography?
It'll be built in.
It's gonna be built in.
Yeah, so that, the expectation is that while it will have two stories, because it's still a raised ranch, because the, probably the egress for it will be able to, they'll be able to work from the back. All right, so you will not see the full height that you would have seen if it was the two-story house that they were originally proposing, with the third level in the back.
With the slope, the property slope, and we could build right into the slope.
That's, you know, sometimes you see the littler windows in the front for the lower level, and that's generally all you see with raised ranches. But again, it's, it depends on the land, and, you know, but in this case, because of the topography, they, you should be able to do that. Okay. All right, we do not have a resolution, because we were, we didn't know where this was gonna go, so what I'd like to do is...
Again, if anybody else wants to speak.
I think we're good on that. So do I have a motion to close and reserve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're not prepared to give a resolution. Technically, we have 62 days. If we don't do that, generally, at the next meeting, we will be able to, first on the agenda would be the decision, okay?
And...
You don't even need to be here if you don't want to be, but, you know.
That's right. I just will do my best to get the set of house plans, so you could see at least, you know.
If you could get them delivered...
As long as I can get the elevations.
Elevations.
Yeah, get elevations to Matt, and Matt can share them with Jackie, so that the neighbors can check in. If you want to see what the front will actually look like, Jackie would have them.
We're busy the next few days at conference.
Oh, okay. Have fun. New Falls, or wherever it was.
Falls, yeah.
Yes. So, okay, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is, this is closed and reserved. And thank you for all the neighbors for coming out. All right, now is just reviews. Somehow, review that changed to discussion, Jackie. Have a good night. Item number four, Appeal 4135, John DeRusso, 3 Patricia Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a nine-foot side yard and a 32-foot rear line variance for a proposed 25-foot by 18-foot or 852-square-foot two-story detached garage pursuant to Section 194-17 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. The footprint of the existing house is 1,454 feet. Good evening. So this is the first time we're seeing your application. If you don't mind taking us through what you're proposing to do.
Well, based on the unique positioning of my home...
I like somebody who listens to my upfront guidance.
I'm sorry? You asked me for, yeah, I'm gonna give you...
Yes, I appreciate that. Go ahead.
I'm gonna coin some of the phrase from the other guy with greenery, what did we say?
Greenery.
Well, based on greenery, I like that. I'm gonna use that in my presentation. Just based on the layout of my home and the way the driveway's positioned, it's kind of essentially the only place I can place this structure with the least amount of disruption to the natural trees of the property lines, and, and just the least amount of disturbance to the property.
Okay. Why two stories? That's the biggest issue for us, is, tell us about the second story. Why do you need a second story?
Storage. I mean, if I'm gonna do it, I might as well do it, right?
There's not, is it gonna be stairs to it, or a pull-down ladder? How are you gonna access the second story?
There'll be stairs on the inside.
Stairs on the inside?
Yep.
So there's not, it's not going to be any residential living spaces, is what I'm getting at.
I assure you, my in-laws will not be living in here. You all have my word. His garage is full. I should have provided photos. I've been out here to this site, but lots of natural screening, and his garage is full. He's got lots of toys, lots of things that he needs to put in the garage, so.
Okay.
I could sell them, but what's the fun of that?
Do you have an existing garage?
I do. I mean, this is not really a garage. I mean, it is, you will have the ability to park a vehicle in there, but because based on...
It's storage.
Yeah, based on the code, because there's a garage door.
Oh, got it.
It's actually a garage door.
Okay.
It's a garage. So that's kind of why we're taking this route. It's not that, it's only 18 by 25. It's not that big.
No, you're right. It's smaller than a typical two-car garage. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Have you talked to your neighbors?
No.
Okay. How impactful would it be to your neighbors? How visible is it gonna be to them?
I don't think it's gonna be impactful at all. Based on the positioning of where their homes and their vantage points and views, it's not gonna impact...
Are there other detached garages in your neighborhood?
There are no detached garages in my neighborhood.
What's the, what material are you looking to finish the garage with?
It's gonna reflect, just like the home, siding, vinyl.
That's important to make sure they know that.
I'm very type A. Everything's particular, so it will, it's not gonna be an eyesore, I assure you.
Okay. What we have to worry about is not just you, but the next owner of this house, okay?
Well, this will only help me, I think. It'll definitely add value to the home, and...
All right, comments or questions from board members?
Um, no, I've got several. Excuse me, you have shed in a pool, and I'm assuming that all of them have COs?
I do everything. I'm required. Everything, I have COs for everybody.
As long as there are no violations on the property?
There should be no violations.
And everything was done properly, that's...
Nope.
And I don't have an issue there?
He's good.
Okay, he's good there. Now, the thing is, on the map, that was, survey map that was provided to us, it was, it said that the proposed shed or garage is 450 square foot. That would be, and it was approximately...
Is it two stories?
Oh, it's two stories, okay.
And the second story is a little bit smaller because of the way, yeah, that's why. We have to, we're, we have to consider both, the square footage of both.
Okay, I see. Okay. So basically, so the footprint is going to be 18 by 25, I believe?
Correct.
Okay.
So Patricia Court, this is opposite Cole Myers on 376. It's not Cole Myers. It's opposite Sabalocos, yes. It's up on a hill.
Correct. It's a 501.
So if you're on 376, you're not really seeing this anyway, because this, there's another lot in the front of you that's further down, but might not be built on.
I have very large evergreen trees. You can't even see my...
Yeah, this is not gonna be visible. Okay. That's fine. That even helps your application, because it's...
Oh, thank you.
Well, it's, what we have to be careful about is that people, drivers along the streets are not distracted by seeing, what's that building doing there? You know, that kind of thing, so.
It's not, I doubt it'll be visible from the road, even in the winter, because like I said, we have evergreens throughout the property, so even in the, when the leaves are down, the evergreen pines are still up.
Okay, I'm, I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Motion to advertise?
Motion to advertise. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll see you next month. You have to put a sign up at the front, in your front yard. Jackie will give you information about your sign.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, item number... Hold on. There is no item number five. Correct. So item number six. I'm, I'm working with my prep meeting agenda and the other ones, so. Item number six, Appeal 4137. Rick, I don't, I hate saying names wrong, so. Scalisi? Thank you. 47 Circle Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 330-gallon above-ground propane tank pursuant to Section 194-17 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. So come on up, and we, again, first time we're seeing your application. You need this tank for...
For a whole-house generator.
A whole-house generator? Okay. So it's really an emergency situation, and this is the only place you can put it?
Because it needs to be 10 feet from the generator. Can't be any, near any windows, doors, anything.
But why this size? I mean, you can get a 100 tank, 100-gallon tank.
This is what our electrician suggested.
Okay, so it gives you the capacity to run a generator for how long?
Quite a while.
Okay. I mean, we...
At least a week.
At least a, yeah, I was gonna...
You only run at least a week on that.
Yeah. I mean, we've been a couple days around here sometimes without power, so I think, again, for the record, it's important for people to understand, you could go with a smaller tank, but then if it's only gonna get you three days instead of six, I think that's important to know, because, because around here, without power, you have no water, you have nothing. You can't even flush a toilet, so.
And one larger tank is better than multiple smaller tanks.
Right. And there's only so, only so many hotel rooms when we all lose power, so, yeah. All right, will it be screened? Is it gonna be visible?
Yeah, I'm gonna put some shrubs around it and make sure nobody can see it.
Yeah, because Blue Hill, the scenery on Blue Hill is a beautiful road, and so...
No, we're on Circle Drive.
Oh, you're on Circle Drive? I'm sorry. That's, okay. Circle, oh, you're in Lake, okay, you're down in...
Yeah, we're down in...
Lake City. Okay. There's a lot, there's a lot of vegetation down in that area.
And it's a wooded area between our house and our neighbors.
Okay. All right. That, that really helps, too, because you don't want your neighbors looking at, because you can't really paint these tanks, so you don't want your neighbors staring at a, at a tank, so. Okay. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I have no comments or questions.
No questions.
Okay, to advertise?
Motion to advertise?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Again, you'll need a sign. Jackie will give you information about your sign, and we'll see you next month.
Excellent.
At the community center.
At the community center, of course.
I need to say that to everybody.
Thank you so much.
All right, see you next month. Item number seven, Appeal 4138, Nichols DeFazio, 11 Fishville Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 26-foot front yard and a 5-foot side yard variance for a proposed front porch, 8-foot by 30 feet or 240 square feet. A 10-foot sideline variance for an 18-foot by 24, and a 15.5 and 15 point, times 15.5, for a total of 675 square foot for two additions. 35-foot lot width variance and a 4.72 increase in non-conformity variance pursuant to Section 194-12, 194-130, and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. All right. Mark, that's why you're here. Please explain what's going on. Obviously, you're putting two additions onto this house.
Correct.
And this is an area that has undersized lots to begin with.
Correct. It's an irregular-sized lot, too. It's, it's shaped like a T. For the most part, the home's existing, and as you mentioned, we're proposing addition to the front, although we're not gonna be decreasing the front yard setback, to my knowledge. And then there's two additions in the back, and there's a shed in the back of the property.
So really, there's one outcropping to the building to begin with, and you're just kind of squaring that off, and then putting a wider addition in the back?
Correct. And it doesn't help that the house is perpendicular to the road, because as you can tell, the lot lines are not.
Right.
So it's, that's causing parts of the problem as well, but...
Yeah, but it's, it's not impactful to the neighbors, really. It's not, it's gonna, it's behind the house.
Correct.
You're keeping with the existing house line on the one side.
Correct.
And stepping it back a little bit each, with each addition on the other side. Is there vegetation on that one side that, where you're, it's stepping back, do you know?
There's some, I would...
A little. There's also a fence.
There's a fence, okay. So how impactful is this going to be on the next-door neighbor?
Their house is set back a little bit further, almost, so. I think you might have some photos.
Okay.
File.
It's labeled wire fence? Is it a wire fence, or is it a stockade or something more?
Privacy fence.
Okay, all right. Further back on the neighboring property, it says wire fence.
Is that the neighbor's house?
Stockade fence.
Stockade?
Do you have those photos somewhere?
I don't know. My email was corrupted, remember? Anything that somebody sent me is gone right now.
I bought you the gift card you wanted.
Oh my God, don't pull there. Oh, I don't wish identity theft on anybody. All right, guys. There's a shed all the way in the back. Is this, does it have appropriate permits, or...
Yes, they have applied for the permits. Your office brought in the application, I believe, so we have all that home.
Oh, yeah, it's got an ice fence. Okay.
And the fence goes all the way back. There's a white vinyl in the front, and in the back, there's a 6-foot privacy fence, but it's wood.
The two-story frame next door is the house next door?
I believe that's next door, yeah.
There's a very distinct difference in size of one house to the neighbor house.
They tend to grow.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, they're only less than two feet away.
Yeah, they're right on the property line.
Yeah, very close.
There's not even room for vegetation on that side.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, that's what we're asking.
That's on the opposite side. They're not going any closer to that house.
Yeah, they're not going any closer to that side.
Yeah, but again...
All right, motion to advertise?
Motion to advertise. Second.
All in favor? Mark, see you next month. You're here for the next one, too, aren't you?
I'm not certain. Maybe. Depends on how it went tonight.
Camille Riggio? 230 Lake Walton Road. They're back. I recognize this address. Requesting a 10-foot size square, a 10-foot square foot size variance for proposed 12-foot by 30 or 360-square-foot accessory structure, and a 9-foot front yard variance for a proposed 6-foot fence more than 10 feet in front of the front line of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-107 and 194-98 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Okay, so you were here before, not too long ago, sorry, not you, Mark, but the applicants... Wasn't that long ago? Wow, okay. And, and what I very much appreciated is the fact that as part of the variance, we asked you to clean, fix the garage a bit, and it was done, and it's looked so much better on there, as someone who goes up Lake Walton Road quite frequently. And so I recognize what you're, what you've got this empty space in your backyard, for lack of anything better, and it's, so you're, you're looking to put a structure back there. So if you can just explain what you mean by accessory structure, what it's, what it's going to get used for? Mark, you can do it.
Just storage for probably yard equipment, I assume?
If somebody, one of you could just come to the microphone. Thank you.
Basically, we lost her mother's garage that we had stored lawn mowers. My car was in there. So basically, we lost that, we lost the shed that was on that property also.
Right.
So trying to condense, condense all that stuff into the garage that we grandfathered over in the last...
Right.
We need more space.
Okay. And this is not really visible, it's...
It's directly behind the house.
It's directly behind the house. I mean, like, as you drive by, you actually can see there.
You can see it, definitely, but...
But it's not going to be out of character with what's there, so...
The setbacks are 100, over 150 feet, front and back. Side setbacks are 60-plus.
Yeah, they've got a very, very level property, it's, you know...
Basically, we're only here because of the 10-foot, because the new law in February put us over the square footage.
Oh, okay.
Had we, you know...
And you can't go over 350 square feet. Oh, okay.
And for the fence in the front lot.
Right. So tell us about the fence.
The fence is going to be a privacy fence between both properties, and if we stopped it where the front of the house was, it just wouldn't look nice. We have the 10 feet that were allowed past the front of the house, so we're actually just asking to go to the garage, so it's just closed off.
Are you blocking any site distance? Is, my biggest issue would be, would you be blocking site distance? No?
No issue, no.
Okay. There's, we've approved 6-foot fences on Lake Walton Road. Actually, a little bit further up, there was one that we did, okay.
But his is going to terminate behind the, the garage that's their current small.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't go all the way, it just stops at the back of the garage.
Okay. But the garage is in the front of the house? That's what the issue is.
That's what the issue was last year. We cleaned that up last time.
Right, 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 right. Okay, I think I'm clear.
Anybody want to see photos? You're good?
Anybody want photos?
No, I'm good.
Because we all, we did see this property a year ago.
Motion to advertise?
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. So we will see you, you still have your signs?
No.
Then you can reuse them. All right, we'll see you guys next month. Good night, Mark. Item number nine, Appeal 4140, Linda Valentino, 65 East Hook Cross Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 47-foot front yard variance for an existing 10-foot by 12-foot or 120-square-foot carport pursuant to Section 194-17 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations.
Hi. My name is Linda Valentino. I live at 65 East Hook Cross Road, and as you said, I have a carport that's existing, but I guess was never permitted, and...
How long has it been there?
The inspector said about 30 years.
Yeah, probably during years.
How, did you buy the property with it there?
Yes, I've, I've bought the property seven years ago, and I did, the search came back clean, so it wasn't even noticed on the, but anyway. It all started because I wanted to get a shed for my mower.
Okay.
And my property is a hill. There's no place to put a shed, no matter how hard I try, I cannot get a shed where I could actually drive the mower into.
Okay, yeah.
Because, so I figured I would just close in the carport, and that's when I found out it wasn't permitted, and it is very close to the road, I would need a 47-foot variance.
Yeah, it's very close to the road.
It is, but I did hand out papers that shows four other properties in my neighborhood that are very close to the road, and some of them even look closer than mine.
The issue is that some of these are, have been here for a lot more than 40 years, okay? And yeah, they are enclosed. My one question in seeing the photos that the inspector had taken, if you, right now, not that you see much through it, but right now, it's, because it's not enclosed, it's not really blocking site distance. Is it going to be impactful for site distance, or no?
It's hard to tell. I mean, you're parking on the opposite side of the street now, so I don't think it really is going to impact any...
Not for them.
No, but, but anybody...
Anybody else, right.
I don't think that's the case.
Because one would think a carport so close to the road would be used for a car, and that's not what you're using it for.
No. In all honesty, I just want it for the mower and the snow blower, and even if you didn't let me fill in the whole thing, I'd be happy doing the back half and put doors on, just, I just really want to secure the mower. It's, I know it sounds crazy, but we have the lot across the street, and it's out, and with just a tarp over it, because there's no place to put it, and it's starting to get rusty.
Does the lot across the street have the ability to put a safer structure on there?
There's, it's just a lot, it's a vacant lot.
It's vacant? As long as they can show it's a buildable lot and leave reserve area for...
Could be a primary residence before you put...
Oh, an accessory structure?
Yeah.
That's why...
That's why you're here, to keep us, keep us honest.
Well, I, I knew that, too, because I, I know it has to have a house on it before I can do an accessory structure, so that is out of consideration.
But it does worry me, it's a, it's a separate lot, and you're parking across there. You have the ability to park on this lot.
Well, we only have that driveway, but it's, it's, the house is very close to the road as well, so it's kind of hard to see the end of the driveway to get out of the house.
So if, that's what I'm worried about.
But the carport is actually further away than the house.
That's why the cars are on the other side.
No, I get that, but at some point, they may sell this lot, separate from the other lot, and then where does some...
We can't do that.
You can't do that, why?
Because the septic and the well is on the other lot.
Oh, so it's a land hook across the street, but it's all part of one lot?
And that's two separate tax numbers?
Two separate tax lots.
The house was built in the 60s.
Okay.
And I don't know how they got away with it, but our well and septic goes under the road, and it's on that lot across the street. So we were told when we bought the place, you can never build a house over there, because the well and septic's there.
And they can't sell...
What's the...
...the lot they're on without selling it.
What's your total acreage?
2.75. The house lot is 1.25, and the vacant lot is 1.50.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah. But not as long as some of these other structures have been there.
No, but that just shows it fits in character with the neighborhood.
I, I, I very much appreciate that, so... See, people listen to us, right?
You know, and having the lawnmower and the snow blower that close to the road, they want to close it in...
Right.
For security.
I know, but it just begs the question, does it, does the structure belong there in the first place? And if it's already 40 years old, what's its useful life? So, that's where I'm getting at.
Okay.
Like, I don't want to make a structure that probably shouldn't be there in the first place, because it's not historical, or like some of these other structures probably are, or would be close to being, because they're more than 50 years there. It's opposed, but if, but I'm hearing you, there's no other place under the lot to put this?
There's no place at all, it's just literally, it's a hill.
It's a hill.
I, I tried everything to meet the setbacks with the smallest shed possible to get this, I know it sounds crazy, the mower in, but that is honestly my number one and only concern.
All right, so questions from board members?
And it's built very well, I think it'll last another 20 or 30 years. It's got big bolts, it's big wood, it's, there's a picture of it.
What is the siding going to look like?
It's going to be board and battin' with, hold on.
What, what does your house look like? With what?
We're going to put, use hemlock, rough-cut hemlock.
Oh, okay.
So I'm, and I'm just going to stain it to try to blend it in with the trees and the...
So you're going to keep it a natural color?
Yes.
You're not matching your, what's, what color's your house?
It's an ugly whitish-yellow.
You could have just said whiter, whitish-yellow. You didn't have to say ugly-whitish-yellow. Okay. Makes me want to go out here and go visit this house, you know?
Oh, you'll have to, it's very unique.
Very unique, I like that word.
Tax perspective or property perspective, this lot and the lot across the street...
Are one lot, or were there two lots?
Two lots.
Two lots, but they're connected...
By the well and septic.
But again, by the, by the deed, there's a deed restriction that you can't even construct on the second lot, so wouldn't that be considered...
Is that what she, did you represent, is there something in the deed about not being able to build on the lot across the street?
No, we just said that.
Right, so...
So there's no permanent requirement that you have to sell these lots together?
Well, eventually, I would like to piece them together. I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, there is, it's possible.
But I would like to connect them at some point. But that's a project for the future, I can only...
So collectively, they're the 2-point acre, 2-point something acres, or each individual lot is?
No, the vacant lot is 1.50, and the house lot is 1.25.
Okay, so collectively, they're the 2.75.
Yes, but it's just literally a hill. It's unusable completely, but I kind of like it that way.
Okay, so I guess even though it's over an acre, theoretically, somebody could build a house there.
What's the zoning here? Some of what could be zoning is 3 acres, so that's...
What?
What's this? So they, so they need 2 acres?
It's 2, now, yeah.
They need 2 acres, they can't build on the lot.
Okay, so it's 2 acres, so...
That's why they need the lot.
So they, so because it's undersized lot, so they can't really build on it until...
Oh, we're not considering this an undersized lot, though?
No, for the 2 acres, I mean, in, in case somebody...
Well, it is.
Yeah, because it is over an acre, but under 2 acres. Pardon me?
You have a road in between them.
I know, but you can land hook a lot. You, you can put a, a hook that connects the lot across the street and make it one lot. So that's what they need to do, is really what it sounds like. Otherwise, we have to deal with the fact that it's an undersized lot. Do you agree, or no?
I'll tell you, if they, if they combine the parcels...
Right, they'd be fine.
Would they be able to build a garage on the other side?
Yeah.
Yeah, because then it's on that parcel.
Right. And that might give them something that gives them more utility...
Correct.
The long run.
Unfortunately, you still have to cross the road.
Yeah, but they're parking there anyway.
But they're doing that now, to, to get the parcels.
But again, there'd be a permanent structure on the opposite side.
Right. But by combining the parcels...
Correct.
Yeah.
And then we get...
Have you thought of that?
You can land for property.
Have you thought about that, Linda?
Yes.
Combining them?
If you, yeah, if you, well, if you combined them, you would be able to put a structure on the other side, could give you more utility, you could put your car in the garage, you could do other things that would give you greater functionality.
Well, we were afraid, we were afraid to do that, because the septic lines and stuff is there, we don't want to drive any heavy equipment over there.
Well...
Because the septic and the well is right in the beginning of the lot, and the whole rest of the lot is just garden.
So you, there's no way to get in, like, a driveway in there, aside from the septic and well?
I don't think so.
There's going to be a separation between the septic, between the septic and well, too.
There's, there's definitely 100 feet, because I measured.
Across the street, it goes like this.
Okay.
And then it flings out.
Ah.
I mean, I guess you could build it up, I mean, I guess you could, but...
There's 200 feet of frontage on that lot across the street, 198, so should be able to find a place to put a driveway in, I would think. It's, it's just an idea.
I know, it's not what you're here for.
But I don't know if you consider hardships, but there is no way I could ever afford to do that.
Yeah.
But combining the two lots would just make it easier for you and for any future buyer to know that this two property stays, I mean, these two lots are part of the one...
Right, it preserves your, it preserves your septic and well access.
Correct.
No, that, that is a thing for the future, I would like to do that in the future.
Yeah. I don't know.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of, unfortunately, there's a hill up there, so you really don't have much working space.
Right.
And in the back, you, and again, a lot of structures in this whole property.
And what's in there defends is the fact that they didn't build this carport in the first place. You bought the property seven years ago with it, with it there.
Correct. I, I put a picture in there, too, of when we had that little macroburst, and it shows it was there, and that was only three months after I bought the house.
Oh, okay.
Because we weren't even living in it yet.
Okay, I guess, let's hear from the neighbors, motion to advertise?
Second.
On favor?